Evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, November fourteenth, and this is the monthly meeting of the Special Improvement District. I'd like to ask you a call to order and take a roll call, please.
Okay, Alexa Clark.
Here.
Tracy Katz Levine here. Tim Hoffman.
Here.
Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Here.
Ben Stoller.
Ben is asking me to send him the link, so.
Ashley Schultz.
Ashley is not attending.
Richard Wasserman.
Here.
Stephen Weiner.
Here.
Let me just send it to you.
Okay. Notice of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting, to the extent known, was provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner pursuant to the provisions of NJSA ten forty-sixth, et cetera, the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting and all meetings in two thousand and twenty-four was provided to the township clerk, posted in town hall, the township's website, and provided to newspapers on December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'd like to ask you all to rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, can I just say very briefly? I just wanted to say thank you from the last meeting for the tribute to my mom. Thank you for the support.
You're most welcome. She was quite a force of nature. We have some very sad news to report as well. Cynthia Burney of Stone Mountain Properties passed away on October twenty-third. Douglas Webb of Zoma Salon passed away on October eighth. And Luba Lubanski of Janel Salon passed away on November fifth. So I'd like to ask you all for a moment of silence in memory of their passing. Thank you. The purpose of this Special Improvement District is to promote, grow, and support local businesses, property owners, residents, and visitors. The mission of the Melbourne Township CID is to encourage the economic, cultural, and social vitality of the township through increased marketing and visibility, improved and renewed infrastructure, and local business development engagement. We will now have an approval of the minutes. Mr. Grillo would like to make a statement before we proceed with the approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a point of clarification on the public meeting minutes from last month, there was a post that was put on Facebook by Mr. Feld. We have it that said that I, quote, proposed eliminating the one hundred and twenty-five-foot buffer rule during my State of the CID report. So I wanted to clarify that. That statement is incorrect. I did not suggest eliminating that rule. As you can see from the notes that are actually in the minutes, so it's written as well. I said, I just want to quote for the record, "I would love to see advocacy and discussion on the one hundred and twenty-five-foot rule which prohibits restaurants on Upper Melbourne Avenue and Moore's Turnpike. We understand the intent of that, but two of the five districts cannot recruit a restaurant, and I think there needs to be some discussion on how we alleviate that." Obviously, I didn't use the word eliminate. So my comments were not meant to suggest abolishing an existing rule, but instead reflect the reality that retail continues to change, and many large box stores and strip malls, especially on Moore's Turnpike, do need to have the proper zoning and parking requirements for experiential retail, medical, and other uses. Dave Cosgrove and Jay Mori Ali were mentioned in that post. I spoke to both of them directly. Both of them had robust conversations with me and understood that I was not proposing eliminating. Again, I never said it, but that we do need to analyze our zoning and ensure that when we do eventually have vacancies in some of those more difficult-to-replace locations. I use the AT&T store as an example. It's a large white box suited ideally for a restaurant, but if we don't have the ability to do so, we need to make sure that other types of uses can be accommodated. So that was the conversation I had with both of them, as well as others who expressed concern. And I wanted to get that on the record. I promised Mr. Mori Ali that I would do that. It's been done, and I appreciate both he and Mr. Cosgrove taking the time to speak with me about it. So I just want the minutes to reflect that and obviously the minutes from tonight to reflect that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Grillo. May I have a motion to approve the public session minutes from October seventeenth? They are attachment one in your packet.
Motion.
May I have a second? May I have a roll call vote?
Alexa Clark. Quick question. Mr. Slattery, can you just remind me? I wasn't at the meeting, but I did watch it. I reviewed and I. And I read the minutes.
You're not precluded from voting. If you've reviewed the minutes and they're accurate, you can vote in favor or opposed.
Okay, so Tracy Katz Levine, yes. Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Yes.
Ben, is Ben Stoller on?
We're working on it.
We're working on getting him to accept to be a panelist.
Okay, well, come back. Ashley Schultz is not here. Stephen Weiner.
Affirmative. Ben's out.
Ben's out.
May I have a motion to approve the public session minutes from October seventeenth? Attachment two. May I have a motion to approve those minutes? May I have a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Alexa Clark.
Yes.
Tracy Katz Levine, yes. Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Yes.
Ben is not on yet. Ashley Schultz not here. Stephen Weiner.
Yes.
While we await the technology updates, I just want to remind the volunteers that there will be a cocktail appreciation event on Monday, December ninth from seven to nine P. M. at Boxcar. So all those that have volunteered their time, you should have gotten an email. If you did not, I am extending an email. Please RSVP to Steve or to the volunteer appreciation RSVP link on the township website. The RSVP date for responding is December second. And once again, the event is December ninth, Boxcar, seven to nine P. M.
That's volunteered for the whole township.
Yes, these are volunteers, not just for Explore, but any committee that you serve on collectively, you are invited, and as well as not just residents, but those merchants and those other participants are also invited that sit on advisory committee as well. Explore Advisory Committee. May I have a motion to approve the public session minutes from October seventeenth? They are attachment one in your packet.
Motion.
May I have a second? May I have a roll call vote?
Alexa Clark. Quick question. Mr. Slattery, can you just remind me? I wasn't at the meeting, but I did watch it. I reviewed and I. And I read the minutes.
You're not precluded from voting. If you've reviewed the minutes and they're accurate, you can vote in favor or opposed.
Okay, so Tracy Katz Levine, yes. Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Yes.
Ben, is Ben Stoller on?
We're working on it.
We're working on getting him to accept to be a panelist.
Okay, well, come back. Ashley Schultz is not here. Stephen Weiner.
Affirmative.
Ben's out.
Ben's out.
Okay. With respect to the closed session minutes from October seventeenth, attachment two. May I have a motion to approve those minutes? May I have a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Alexa Clark.
Yes.
Tracy Katz Levine, yes. Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Yes.
Ben is not on yet. Ashley Schultz not here. Stephen Weiner.
Yes.
While we await the technology updates, I just want to remind the volunteers that there will be a cocktail appreciation event on Monday, December ninth from seven to nine P. M. at Boxcar. So all those that have volunteered their time, you should have gotten an email. If you did not, I am extending an email. Please RSVP to Steve or to the volunteer appreciation RSVP link on the township website. The RSVP date for responding is December second. And once again, the event is December ninth, Boxcar, seven to nine P. M.
That's volunteered for the whole township.
Yes, these are volunteers, not just for Explore, but any committee that you serve on collectively, you are invited, and as well as not just residents, but those merchants and those other participants are also invited that sit on advisory committee as well. Explore Advisory Committee. Maybe we should just have him.
Yeah.
Why don't you just have him open his cellphone and just leave the cellphone and we can.
He's on with Tim right now.
Okay.
But we can progress.
We can proceed, and we'll come back. We'll come back to the. Do you need? Do we need the? No, okay. Treasurer's report, Mr. Weiner, Mr. Grillo, and Amanda Dean.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Attachment three in your materials is our regular expenses report through October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Highlights in that report. Our bank balance as of October thirty-first was eighty thousand, four hundred fifty-seven dollars, thirty-five cents. We always update that closer to our meeting. So at November fifth, it was seventy-two thousand, three hundred and four dollars. Excuse me. Year-to-date spend in the bottom right-hand corner was two hundred, is two hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, fifty-four cents. Our remaining obligations are a little over forty-one thousand dollars. So we're still targeting, with our grant money coming in, about twenty-three thousand dollar balance in the bank at the end of the year. So we're very much on target. That includes our twenty thousand dollar contingency fund. Yeah.
The holdover.
Yep, yep. So sponsor funding report.
Okay. So all of the sponsorships that were due at this time have been paid. So we have a hundred percent in. We have one more from the Garden State Dental Design. Sorry. So all of the sponsorships that are due at this time are in. They've been collected and deposited. We have one more coming from Garden State Dental Design at the end of the month. And I also have one more potential sponsor. I have a call with tomorrow for the Winter Villages. So we may have some additional money coming in, and I'll send you an update when I have one. Other than that, I think we've reviewed this a few times. Does anyone have any questions?
Great job on getting all the payments in.
Yes, yes.
It helps.
Yeah. Having a hundred percent collected accounts receivable is noteworthy and commendable. Thank you.
So I'll cover the public art grant and the budget and everything, but I was going through the packet. I just want to make a note for the record. Ms. Urso submitted her comments. She did not speak at the last meeting, so she submitted a written comment. That was included in the minutes in the packet, but just wanted to add that to the verbal record as well. Essex County Public Art Grant. So we were notified after our last meeting that we received five thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars from Essex County for our third-year public art grant funding. So we'll need to match that with our own funds for a total project cost of eleven thousand, three ten. As I mentioned at our budget meeting, we were using that as a placeholder until we got the formal notice. We then received it. The budget that was sent to the Township Committee reflects that final number, because we usually don't receive that number until December. We got it early this year, so we included it in. So that'll be a total project cost of eleven thousand, three hundred. Speaking of the budget, we did introduce the budget to the Township Committee this Tuesday. We went through a very robust presentation. Jackie, Stephen, Ben, and myself all presented. Richard was there in attendance, Amanda as well. We received four to one vote in the affirmative to move forward. So the next, the public hearing and the final vote on the two thousand and twenty-five budget will be on December seventeenth. We'll be giving out communications about how business owners and property owners can attend that meeting. But we do encourage anybody listening to this and anybody that is a business owner or property owner to please come out and support or voice your opposition. You can do whatever you'd like. But we assume, based on the four years of work we've done, that many people will be in support.
Okay, guys, I'm now on, by the way.
Ben, would you like to add anything about the budget since you were so important in participating in it?
I think it was a good presentation, well-received, and we've, and it passed through, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Stoller. Okay. I would now like to invite Erica Russo for M and T. Yes, so.
You want me to do it or just?
Yes, please.
Stephen, you want to?
Yeah, sure. So Steve and I have, we're discussing the desirability to change banks. We've been with the same bank since we started the CID, and we just have not been getting servicing. We haven't been getting the proper support that we think that banks could and should be providing to us in a nonprofit. That means supporting us with educational issues, you know, situations, tutoring or being available to business owners to ask questions and funding and all sorts of just having a more open door and supportive model. So we did look around. We did, we wanted a smaller, no insult, but we didn't want a big global national bank here. We were looking for a more local-focused bank. There were a few options. We spoke, we reached out to all of them. We believe M and T Bank is going to really improve our relationship with our banks. So, Steve, anything else? I mean, that's.
And we're located on Main Street down the street.
Right across from Splurge, but yes.
Within the, within the boundaries of the CID.
Yes.
And also, I think it should be noted that our previous banking relationship was with a smaller bank that unfortunately got taken over. And through that transition, a lot of the systemic transfers and processes and, as Ben would say, KPIs and dashboard information did not translate well. And whatever, it just became very, very difficult as an entity to deal with on an ongoing basis when you're trying to run a business. So that being said, this is, this feels right. So please, please proceed, Erica. Thanks for coming.
No problem. Thank you for having me. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to tonight's meeting to talk about an institution I hold near and dear. Manufacturers and Traders Trust is one hundred and sixty-five years young, based out of Buffalo, New York. At M and T Bank, our purpose is a simple one. Make a difference in people's lives and uplift the communities we serve. On the retail level, my team and I do that both daily. Our business model is to perform long-term by serving consistency, whether you are served in Melbourne, Roseland, Union, or Livingston, if you decide to transact in one of our neighboring branches within our region. Our model is rooted in the community banking approach, as many of you have already witnessed. Most of you have been introduced to me when I was at Town Hall Plaza with my coworker Anna during your anniversary event in August. Or maybe it was when I was filling envelopes in Town Hall or when I was draping spider webs and setting up pumpkins in the pumpkin patch a couple of weeks ago. I'm aware this has nothing to do with banking, but if our community cannot put a face to a name or even a brand, then there must be some type of disconnection. My passion for community comes from my previous career, the restaurant industry. My restaurant was in the town where I grew up and consisted of roughly twenty-five employees. Majority were immigrants. There were many roadblocks I faced as an executive chef and owner. The most disheartening was not being able to create equity for those who did not have a social security number. I can say with not only a smile, but with pride, M and T Bank welcomes all individuals from all over, social security number or not, to open a bank account. I have onboarded full businesses, front and back of house, because M and T welcomes banking for all. We also have our bankers who can assist customers because of their bilingual certification badges in languages like Spanish, Hindi, Punjabi, Portuguese, Polish, and Greek. Another community we assist is the disabled and uniquely abled community. M and T has partnered with Magnus Cards, a free app for Apple and Android users that storyboards banking to people who depend on tablets and devices for communication and understanding. People like students from Inroads Opportunities in Roselle, who I see monthly for free financial education classes, or the adults from Independence Three-Sixteen Whippenny, who independently come into our branches and transact with confidence. At the end of the day, I believe that's all we really want to feel. Their funds are safe and with confidence. They believe in the people who are managing it. We want our communities to understand that they can rely on us to get involved and help them grow even stronger. We take and act a role in the communities we serve, and that's a responsibility we don't take lightly. Over the past decade, M and T and the charitable foundation have contributed more than two hundred and seventy-nine million dollars to its sixty-seven hundred nonprofits. Just about a week ago, the managers of M and T had to submit a nonprofit of their choice for two thousand and twenty-five that they would like to see obtain that donation. I immediately wrote to my regional and why I chose Explore Melbourne Short Hills as my choice for two thousand and twenty-five. I do not have an answer for you on the outcome as the decisions have not been made yet. But please have confidence in knowing you will be working with an institution who believes in small business, community, partnerships, and most importantly, we believe in Explore. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Does anybody from the board have any questions for Erica? Erica, you may want to stay just for a minute, just to see. Not so fast.
Can't wait.
I can ask a question.
Sure, you can.
So Erica, as you know, we have over five hundred businesses that, you know, that we work with. Will you have opportunities to do workshops? And as our community banker, are you going to be able to have workshops and different classes? Seminars and different classes where our small businesses?
Absolutely.
We have a lot of entrepreneurs that are, may not be so, you know, may not know the ways of banking or social media or marketing. That's one of the things that we do, but I would think that you might be able to help us.
Absolutely. So whether it is done here or outside when it's beautiful in Town Hall Plaza or whether it's set in our branch, you know, it is completely encouraged, not only by, you know, my employer, M and T Bank, but it's also a passion of mine because I like to educate people on what I wasn't educated on. So now that I have that really, that deep-dive relationship into the background of helping small business, I just want to exude all information at all time. And besides the fact it's free. So, you know, just because we would possibly be obtaining you all into our relationship, that doesn't mean I wouldn't go to them anyway. You know, I believe in small business. When I'm not in the branch, it's because I'm going door-to-door, just introducing myself, so.
I'm in the Steve on the streets, going door-to-door.
I have a quick question, just as a, I guess, part for Steve. And Steve is, are the pricing and terms similar to what we were receiving?
Well, yeah, yes.
Could you, I guess, just comment on that a little bit?
Things like free checking and.
I don't know that we need every detail, but just trying to understand from the.
The portfolio.
Like the, the dollars and cents in terms of any costs or interest rates.
Sure, sure. So it's really, it's really depending on how many things you would like to open. So if we want to start with your basic housing of bank account, we actually offer a nonprofit bank account, which would be more in your favor because there are a lot of things that are already worked into, you know, the cost of it. It's not we're going to charge you for business checks. Those are already included. You know, it's not you calling the back of your debit card for the one-eight-hundred number. You're going to be calling me or my team in Melbourne, and then I will escalate the issue for you. It's very turnkey. You know, I try to make it as simple as possible. You come to me and I take care of your banking for you. And I, I promise I will.
That's what you're lacking, you know, when it became bigger.
Definitely.
Yeah.
And as you recall, I think Jackie said it quite eloquently, you know, as our small bank became a national bank or major corporate bank. There were trouble, there was issues with the audit and getting documents and just elongated things and actually cost us money. So I think having a smaller local bank, community-based bank, will also help with our audit, which is obviously a critical aspect of our performance.
So when it comes to documentation and things like that, we actually obtained seven years of documents at my fingertips. And then anything further, I would escalate for you and then obtain. And it would all come in via PDF, so you have it as soon as possible. But if you wanted actual records, I would get them as quickly as I could for you, overnighted.
And you would do offer it for small businesses in our districts and our town? Are you offering simple advocacy spending?
Absolutely, absolutely. So we have different levels of our business banking accounts. It all starts with what type of account you're looking for for your business. You know, if you're basically a startup, I would be putting you in our baseline account, you know, get you with your first business credit card, let you build your credit. And then being one of the top ten SBA lenders in our footprint, it's very important to let you know that we partner with them. We will be your advocate all the way through. And I do that entire process until those closing documents come. So it's basically I'm handling it with the business owner and their business until they get that deposit.
And as we said before, your office is right across the street. You're the go-to person for.
I'm one of, I'm one of the go-to people. It's a team effort.
And you're here, and so are our merchants and our board members. So we need you, you're here.
I am.
That's what we need.
I am.
And Erica's already joined our advisory committee. I'll talk about the meeting we had last night, and she was just appointed last night as well to the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. So I'm getting very involved in the local business community.
Great, terrific.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions? And then we can allow Erica to sit down.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay. And then, yes. So first, I want to read the resolution, right?
Tracy can.
Tracy, Tracy will read the resolution, then I'll ask for a roll call vote. Thank you.
Okay, resolution authorizing executive session for the, is this right? No.
Wait, did you get the wrong?
I think you gave me wrong. This is from, I think you gave me the one from last. This must have come out of the minutes. Jackie, what are you? No, that's what you handed me. I think you must have pulled out the one from the minutes.
I didn't change this.
Is it just the headline?
Yeah, ignore that, just read that part.
Okay, sorry. I was like, wait, I'm not reading my thing. Okay. Resolution twenty-four oh oh five. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Melbourne Short Hills Business Organization Inc., here in Afton Board, has expressed an interest in considering and developing a new banking relationship. And whereas the Board authorized the Executive Director and Treasurer to meet with potential banking partners throughout the Special Improvement District. And whereas M and T Bank, located at sixty-two, sixty-four Main Street, Melbourne, New Jersey, oh-seven oh four one, has presented an adequate proposal for services. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board authorizes the Executive Director to transfer all funds and accounts from Citizens Bank to M and T Bank. I hereby certify that the.
I agree with that.
Okay. So I guess I don't say that. I'm going to say it's duly adopted until we adopt it yet.
So that's, yeah, that's, okay.
Okay, may I have a roll call vote?
We need a motion.
Yes, may I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash zero zero five, authorizing Explore Melbourne Short Hills to proceed with moving to M and T Bank as their selected banking provider.
Motion.
I will second that. At this point, I would like to ask for a roll call vote, please.
Alexa Clark.
Yes.
Tracy Katz Levine, yes. Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Yes.
Ben Stoller.
Yes.
Ashley's not here. Stephen Weiner.
Yes.
I hereby certify that the above resolution was duly adopted by the Melbourne Short Hills Business Organization Inc. Board of Trustees at a meeting of said Board of Trustees on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Erica. Appreciate your coming out this evening. Thank you. Thank you very much, Erica. Appreciate your coming out this evening. Township Committee report, Mr. Stoller, would you please update us on flood flood advisory?
Sure, we just gave a flood mitigation uh open public session, which was very well attended by all, very good questions asked. Very informative. Everyone broke into groups by districts, uh so we were very happy with that. Uh, we had the TC meeting uh on Tuesday. Uh, we went through the budget, et cetera, as Steve had said earlier, and that's pretty much it. And I apologize for not being there up in Toronto at the uh launch of a new plant, so sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Stoller. Does anybody have any questions for Ben regarding the flood mitigation advisory committee update? Okay, we will proceed. Uh, Tim Hoffman, Municipal Insurance Registration Portal Launch.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Uh, don't have too much to report this evening other than the municipal insurance uh registration portal launch. What we're doing there is to comply with state law where businesses have to submit their business registration certificate to the municipality on an annual basis. Uh, we are making an easy way for them to do so by uh using the STL portal. So the STL portal, we have a new online form available for businesses to upload their certificate and fill out the form that we have there. Um, and that's something that they'll have to do annually uh to to comply with the state law there. Um, and our goal is just to make that as easy as possible for the businesses. So we did a pilot for to do a soft launch to test out any any issues that might happen with the process. Um, and that that phase went well, so we're going to to now push that out further as we move along in the weeks ahead.
So that will be an annual registration twenty twenty five.
So the businesses.
Or is it, or is it, you know, depending on when their fiscal or calendar, it's not a calendar year, it could be their fiscal year.
It depends on when the businesses themselves submit it. So if, say, somebody did it on May first, twenty twenty four, it's going to be after that May first, twenty twenty five, or they're going to have to do that again.
Okay.
So for each business, it will be at a different.
Right.
Period of time.
They're also depending on when they, when they launch us as a new business.
Absolutely, yep.
Got it. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hoffman?
Lex gives credit, she was the first person. She was, she was our guinea pig, she did it.
Uh, our attorneys report, Mr. Slattery, Bear Properties versus Milburn Township case study.
Good evening, everyone.
Case study, excuse me.
Um, so the uh briefs and related documents have been filed in the Bear Properties case. If you'll recall, last time there. Was a trial date that was originally for around now. I think it was the twelfth that had been adjourned. Uh, I haven't seen a new trial date proposed yet, but procedurally, the court should set up that date, which is effectively an oral argument. And the attorneys will come in and argue the case. The judge will either decide the case then or issue a written opinion sometime shortly thereafter. We'll keep you apprised as soon as we have that date, so you're aware of it and we'll continue to monitor.
Thank you. Amanda Dean, Marketing and Events Report.
Okay. Um, so wanted to briefly kind of do a look back at um Town Hall Plaza, uh but more about what we're looking to do next year. I mean, we all had a great time, thought it was a fabulous um effort and uh the community and business community benefited from that. We're looking to open it mo- most likely mid-June next year and go through the end of uh September. Um, we want to increase the amount of music we have and do Friday and Saturday nights. Live music is is the big draw. Uh, for the for the area, we want to professionalize the food court area as well. Um, additional seating, we've already talked about a part time staffer to assist with the area. Um, updated and expanded go, expanded electrical. Um, those are things we knew we might have had issues with this year. I think we know what we need moving forward, so uh we'll be working on that. Um, improved signage, we want to do branded um barricades. And uh we also want to do a backdrop behind the band, which will be nice. Um, replace some games, add some games, uh expand the planters and decorations. And continue to work with the businesses for them to be able to table at events and also just whole classes like Romo Box and things like that. And then we'll also be evaluating the um events we did have to see which ones we re-mono-repeat, other things we may want to do. So. I think it's just all positive things moving forward. And we're we're looking forward to getting started. So uh that's, I think, the the bulk of what we're talking about so far.
Can I ask a quick question? What do you mean, what do you have in mind when you say professionalize the food? Like, what changes do you think you might?
Either get additional gazebos for them to be under. Um, or or some other type of of structure and and signage, so it.
Oh, so.
Has, yeah, versus.
More established and.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, we had no idea this year how many restaurants would participate.
Right.
It ended up being usually three, sometimes four.
Right.
Every now and then we had um the wine uh Unwined Boutique did one or two events. Um, and so, but for the most part, it was three restaurants. My expectation, quite honestly, is that next year after they've seen it for a year and.
Yeah.
I think the restaurants did very well that participated.
And there's enough power right there next to the building that.
Well, part of it's expanding that as well, but yes.
Okay.
Um, but I think, yeah, gazebo's and, you know, just not having to move it in and out all the time, it'll just look better and. Um, so now that we know what to expect, we can make it look a little bit more formal.
Yeah. Is there, is there any way to get them like some more permanent structure like for like for storage for? Ice and things of that, you know, I mean, that would be.
I think all that is in play.
Right.
You know, we could get, uh, this is a plastic kind of locker bin outside, that's a good example, so. Yeah, I think we want to just make it as easy as we can for the restaurants to not have to go back and forth to their brick and mortar, so. Um, I think we learned lessons about service, you know, outdoor service is challenging.
Um, and I bet we also did start those efforts, um and it was definitely because of DPW, they gave us a storage container for Town Hall Plaza items. And so the restaurants had access to that and they were able to leave their portable ovens, you know, cups, all kinds of things, so. Whatever we could help them with, they were able to keep that and alleviate tons of trips back and forth, yeah.
Are are we, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, really, garbage wasn't an issue, right? In terms of waste after.
No, we had, uh, let's see, on Saturday mornings, Public Works came and took everything. On Sunday mornings, the private vendor that we paid through the Clean Communities Grant, which we requested again as part of their their community cleanup. They took all the garbage out of the garbage bins. So it worked out very well. It's actually cleaner and easier than Main Street.
Is there any more room for for uh signage and sponsorship? In other words, maybe for some of the infrastructure that we still need, is there any way to offset some of the costs with that with sponsorship? Can somebody sponsor, I don't know, a, you know, any any extra equipment that we need?
I I mean, I think absolutely. We, this was a very successful sponsorship program for Town Hall Plaza.
But literally like, oh, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars for a bench and you put likes, you know, courtesy of business name, that kind of stuff.
I I think we can have a, you know, really kind of uh several conversations about the different things we can do and how to go about.
I mean, there's a lot of opportunity. Even where like when a band is playing, like to sponsor, you know, their their play or a sign. You know, like, you know, like different bands, you know, if there was one band, you could have them spy, be sponsored by, you know, by by somebody.
Yeah.
Could offset some of that sponsorship.
I think, if I remember, uh, it was our number one event to be sponsored this year, mine certainly. So people wanted to be exposed to this event, so I think the sky's the limit.
Yeah, we can definitely.
It's only somebody's up with enough things to sponsor.
Right.
It's the hard work, so.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, benches and gazebos and all the rest of it, yeah. Right.
And signage is always a big component of the sponsorship in general, so. Again, that's another thing we can, it could be not just A frames, it could be, you know, up above a gazebo or wherever that may be.
Right, great.
I'm hoping that our uh our vendors, uh, our our dessert vendors and our ice cream uh will be able to participate more because I think sometimes people. You know, may may have their meal in another part of town and just come later after and drift in and if if we could. I know, I know, I know everyone agrees with me, but I, it's a staffing issue too, and I recognize. That that's probably the number one problem for any, any merchant in 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 the uh community. That staffing is the the number one challenge.
Yeah, I think, you know, we're going to be so far ahead of it this time that people will be able to plan accordingly. And I know, you know, for instance, with Haagen Dazs. Um, they're having a a cart that has, it's being branded, but it's going through the Haagen Dazs branding process. So that's why they couldn't come with a. Um, a really professional.
Freezer chest.
Right, exactly. So I'm imagining that that will be out next year and, you know, and and part of. The infrastructure and changes will be confirming who's going to participate, so we can kind of build around that.
And just process wise, remember last year, we didn't know if it was going to be Main Street, Town Hall Plaza, when, right, we didn't know that until. April, really, right? And so we only had sixty days to plan and execute Town Hall Plaza. If the budget is approved in December, there's a set aside for Town Hall Plaza's budget in that. So we'll have a much, much bigger picture. And really, it'll just be, we can, we can probably actually pass an ordinance early in the year stating that the dates is closed instead of having to do it in May.
Right.
Right? So we'll have a way longer runway this time, um, going into it.
Any other questions?
I have no. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay.
Okay.
Onto social media.
Yes, so um we have worked with uh eats with M Emily uh during Restaurant Week last year. And uh when looking for, you know, professionals to come in and do training, uh she was one of the people we we reached out to and was incredibly accommodating and. Um, so she put together an Instagram reel training. It was a um, a live webinar with a Q and A and it was last Friday. Um, we had eight people attend. Um, seven people requested the um, the recording afterwards and we've had just incredibly positive feedback. About uh the training. She covered um, just how to build a reel in general, but she also went over other different apps like CapCut. In shot, as well as she went over adding music, voiceovers, captions, hashtags, and then all of the kind of current. Um, Instagram, you know, recommendations, things like that. So um, we plan on adding this um video to our website as well as sending it out to the businesses. But I think, you know, Steve could would agree that we definitely would like to hire her again in the future. So.
She did a great job, very professional.
Yeah.
But is her name again?
Emily.
Her name is Emily, and I forget her last name. Um, but her.
Compete.
Handle is eats with M, E M.
Yeah.
Um, and she lives in Union. Um, she works for a pharmacist, a pharmaceutical company during the day. But during COVID, started getting into social media, posting restaurants and things, like many influencers, and now it's blossomed into.
It's a part time.
Seventy, do you remember any followers that are working?
I, not a, not a hand.
All we ever do is talk about influencers and my followers. Um, really high school girls.
Eats with M, E M?
E M M.
E M M.
E M M.
Yeah, but she's local. Um, she's in Milburn quite a bit, so. Um, straight up having her, but I thought she did, it's a twenty seven page, you know, slide per uh presentation. Went through, you know, line by line, this is how you edit a video, this is how you add sound. Um, it was really good.
Great.
And I I think also it's helpful because I think reels, um, they're just getting intimidating to make it. And so with her breaking that down that way, it's just making it much more accessible. Okay, uh, winter event schedule. So tomorrow we have our Kids Glow Crazy Holiday Dance Party at uh right next to Boxcar. DJ La Brock is joining us once again, a nine year old prodigy. Um, and we have tons of glow in the dark things. We have um glow in the dark cornhole, dice, uh ring toss. We're going to have. Uh, snowflake glow in dark wands to give to the kids. Um, the Bruce Hill Agency is sponsoring the event. Um, they're going to have giveaways as well, which will be nice to have them out. They haven't participated before like this and um.
What are the hours, I mean?
It's six to eight P M.
Tomorrow evening should be high fifties.
Yeah, so I I think it's going to be one hundred. Great.
Oh, yeah. They were wild that we did this one all against.
Yeah, and we're giving them goodie bags too. Um, a handful of businesses wanted to give some things, so we're putting those together tomorrow. But yeah, I think the glow party stuff will continue to happen in in the explore future. Um, any questions? Okay, so um Holiday Kickoff Extravaganza is happening next uh Saturday, November twenty third. Uh, just a quick review, we're going to have carolers, DJs, uh Santa photos. Olaf and the Grinch will be running around. We're going to have elves greeting shoppers. Um, we're putting together winter selfie walls. They're going to be pretty awesome. Um, holiday decorations and then just a couple of samples of. Some of the things the businesses are doing and more of that keeps coming in. I have things to um. To to uh send out after this meeting and and put on social, but um Milburn Indoor Golf, they're going to be doing uh two hundred and fifty dollar gift cards for two hundred dollars. Um, and two hundred and fifty is the cost for a monthly membership. Oxford Jewelers is going to be doing fifty percent off of state jewelry. As far as some paid items, K and Co Living is going to be doing a charm bar uh in Short Hills. And uh Splurge Bakery is going to be doing a ginger red house decorating workshop. Free activities, um, we have uh Milburn Total Wellness is going to be doing chair massages in the art alley where the Santa photo ops are going to be. Um, Splurge is also doing pie and cake tastings. And um, and then as far as marketing goes, we have our banner up posters, we're doing E blast social. I'm just finishing securing a couple of social media uh media influencers to cover this before and to cover it during to then. Promote um shopping and dining here for the rest of the holiday season. So I think that's it for the.
Holiday hours on November twenty.
So we're, it's twelve to three is when we have all the entertainment.
Okay.
But this is a full day for people, so someone can come in and have brunch, go shopping, you know, take a selfie with some, you know. Um, like uh K and Co, they're having the charm bar from eleven to one, so people can go there, then go to the downtown, do what they're going to do in the downtown. Um, Teenskin's doing things all day. Um, so it's, it's really, we were promoting when all the kind of. Entertainment's happening, but there's so much more to it.
Is the full schedule online?
It's going online when I get out of this meeting.
So some of you can look at all the different.
Yeah, and there's, there's going to be a lot more added. I have to follow up with a a ton of places, especially the restaurants. Um, but uh so far, there's some really fun things. Um, so yes, that's happening, uh and. If, we have free parking. Um, that's starting on the twenty second for holidays. Um, people have to still follow the rules, but it is free parking, so we're promoting that as well.
And twist Alex's arm to give us an extra week this year, but.
So it all could start, but as you all know, we're doing this event to get people out shopping earlier because we're losing a week between uh Thanksgiving and Christmas and Hanukkah, so. Um, it's a new event for us. We'll see, we'll see how it goes, but we're throwing everything we can at it. Um, Winter Villages are coming back December seventeenth, uh sorry, December seventh and fourteenth. We're having both of them at Town Hall Plaza. They'll be from four to eight um P M. Splurge is going to again do the free smores. Um, we're going to have the igloos, fire pits, we'll work on the fire pit situation if we have to, we're not there yet. With the uh the bands. Um, and then we have a lot of uh businesses that want to sell there and have giveaways, so we're going to have a lot of pop ups of sub businesses. So this is expanding in a lot of ways and the potential sponsor I have tomorrow um would also be adding nice elements to it as well, so. Um, that's that's coming along, but my my focus right now is the holiday extravaganza and then we'll move on to the villages.
And we do have a contingency plan if if.
Yeah.
If if it, if uh Mother Nature isn't cooperative and and we have.
Yeah.
Continued um. Drought advisory, fire safety uh con- concerns, so.
And how how are we marketing all these wonderful things? Like, I I I don't know, how does everybody know, know? I mean, I know we have our website. Are we doing any special marketing to to the residents or?
Yeah, so um, I'll just review the um, the list. Um, so I have everything on the patch. I have other event listings I'm adding tomorrow.
Right.
Um. Uh, E blast, um, social website. Um, like I said, we're we're hiring uh most likely two social media influencers. I should be finalizing that tomorrow. Um, and then we also have all of our sponsors and partners that I'm going to be working with so that they can push things out in their channels.
Yeah, we have so many good advances.
And work moms.
And newcomers and Nancy Dries in the uh.
Yeah, I've been sending it to, it's the mayor's message.
Yeah, work mom, work mom is great, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jackie and Tracy have been phenomenal. We send them.
You got that covered.
And then it blows up, so.
Yeah, but Nancy Dries, she put it in the Miller Mail this this week and then uh. Um, Mayor's Message and um, and then I'm going to be working with the Paper Mill and others that are sponsoring events on how they can push that out to their people.
Terrific.
So.
I have a quick question. I was just wondering if you could talk for a moment. Because it was after the last meeting, just Halloween and how that all.
Oh, yeah, it was great. Um.
To be there this year.
Um, no, it was, it was, it was so cool because we got to see families that came last year, so it was like the kids are a little older, they're in different costumes.
So sweet.
Um, and Lisa from um Lisa. Um and Lisa from um Lisa um Go Far Photography, uh Raymond Go Far Photography, she did the free photos again. Um I actually have some things I wanna post to uh share with everybody, but she set up her whole thing and uh that was lovely. The police came and set up a table. We were, we had people at Town Hall Plaza that either the business was too far away or or something, so we had kind of a U of businesses. Um so the police were there. Um we had some new sponsors like Oliver's Nannies that are in the um the Sid. We had face painters, so the little kid, there was just so cute.
Pumpkin Patch.
Pumpkin Patch. Um so uh the Art of Problem Solving, one of our other new businesses, they managed the Pumpkin Patch Pumpkin Painting, uh which was really nice. We added more selfie kind of uh walls this year with haystacks and witches and and things like that. And then we really uh promoted the businesses that were um open to trick or treaters.
Did they get good traffic?
That I'm still getting feedback from. The the thing with this is the timing, because all the different schools get out at different times, especially with the preschools. Um but it the crowd that we seem to get seemed to be that kind of, can you know, two to like eight-year-old kind of, I think you'd agree with that. They're the little kids. Um so I think we'll adjust the timing a little bit more next year. Um but I I think it was really great.
I I think, you know, from when we discussed it, Halloween for us is like a it's like the appetizer before the winter entrees, right? So we use Halloween. We have a built-in audience. The vast majority are local residents, right? When they come to the check-in, either at Town Hall Plaza or the Art Alley, we're then giving them the schedule for the fall events and the winter events, right? So we're talking to five hundred families right during that day, so
Lead generator.
It's a lead generator for us. So it's, you know, it's not a big expense, you know, compared to our other events. It's not a huge setup compared to our other events. It really is getting the schedule in people's hands. And I think that worked out really well, and I think it's gonna reflect in the attendance of the the Extravagans and the Winter Villages. Um yeah, that was a question that actually came up on Tuesday in the budget hearing. They said, well, does the Sid support residents or does it support businesses? Well, if we're doing our job, we're doing both, right? Because residents shop in businesses. Um so I I thought that was fairly elementary, but um you know, this is the kind of event where you get a lot of families who are going to come back and they're going to shop and um we want them to feel like they're part of a community. It's an exciting vibrant community. It's a community that has foot traffic. And so Halloween, I get it. You don't wanna go and have a fancy dinner. You wanna go get your candy. But you might come back to that restaurant that you saw. You might go into that story you didn't know about. So it's a lead generator for us. Speaking of going in, we had a uh a program where you had to go into four stores and get a signature or a stamp. And we got probably fifty-something plus back.
Yeah, fifty to sixty.
Um and then they won a hundred-dollar gift card.
That's a nice number.
And also we got all their contact information.
Yeah, so we're
So and you know, this was easy because you had a lot of very eager kids who wanted to get their hundred-dollar gift cards, so they all got their moms to sign these off.
So what they rose one hundred-dollar gift card, and then we let them tell us where they wanted it from from the Sid, and she wanted from the Standard. So that's on my desk waiting for her to pick it up. Um but yeah, people were really excited about it, and so kind of moving into the Winter Villages. Um we're gonna be doing a similar thing. We did this for Girls Night Out, I think, two years ago. Um and so um people have to make purchases to get um make purchases to get stamps um and signatures, and then they'll be able to potentially win something as well. So um people are de- are definitely motivated by things like this, so um we're gonna keep doing it. Um.
I love promotions like that, because to me, that's combining it all. It's fun for the residents, but it's also directly getting people into different things.
The name Tracy may have been mentioned once or twice when we were designing this.
Thanks for making it happen, but I say
You're lucky we didn't put your face instead of the logo.
So that's
We would have gotten trouble if you didn't.
Uh, that's true.
Um uh something I forgot that I I wanted to comment on too is we um as we did last year with the holidays, we put uh we went to all the the preschools um and put uh gave them flyers for the kids to put in their backpacks for this. We're doing the same thing tomorrow um for the for the rest of our events, so tomorrow morning. So that's another another push as well.
I think fifteen preschools.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, I think it's close to four hundred flyers. So uh so that's working too, and they're they recognize us, you know, they're they're welcoming us to drop them off. We're not like bothering them. Um any other event questions before I move on? Okay, so holiday lighting, um as um I'm on the the committee uh with the township as a tip. Um and so we've been working diligently on this. Um some updates, um we've had great progress with this. We have lights that are installed at the Bauer Center along the roofline. Um we're just, we're gonna get everything on that we can by November twenty-third, quite a part of that holiday kickoff. But those lights, um you can control what colors, you know, when. Um so we're just gonna get timers for that, and then we'll be able to turn those on, and they'll turn on off when we need them to. Um Lot One, DPW installed uh meteor lights and um blue twinkle lights on four of the trees that are closest to the actual um clock tower. So those will be being illuminated as well. Um the Rose Garden, we're gonna be putting um lighting in there that hasn't happened yet. The Courtyard um is going to be uh illuminated on this uh November twenty-second with sphere lights, all the different sphere lights and meteor lights. Um and then Short Hill Station, similarly, there's a couple of trees uh next to that little parking lot next to Boxcar that we're gonna have meteor lights and sphere lights. Uh we have a jumbo snowflake and a jumbo star that are on the way, and they are gonna be installed in Upper Milburn Ave. And I think, I think that's it for now. You know, this is kind of the first phase. We're trying different things. Um we're using a few different vendors, including DPW, to see how the installations work and and um and then we'll be able to make more informed decisions next year um on how we're gonna approach it.
And and these decorations will stay up through New Year, is the plan, absolutely. Yeah, we have to talk about the exact date, but definitely.
And big credit to Tim, because he's been handling all the procurement, and it is not easy, so.
Wow. A- a- anything with um, yeah, we talked about the sound, remember we used to have a sound system?
So
Is that, is that, is that somewhere in the works?
Yeah, so that that's gonna be um a twenty twenty-five project. As you may know, we have these old World War Two era air raid sirens.
Right.
I think there's probably fifteen or twenty of them. I think one or two actually work, um which is amazing that they still do, but most of them do not. Um so part of my discussions with Alex McDonald is to Bluetooth those speakers uh for next year. And so certainly the downtown, and then, you know, if we could do Upper Milburn and Short Hill Station as well with the pedestrian traffic, that would be great. Obviously, we need to figure out how that system would be controlled and the music would be played. Um I do have a vendor that that I know has done this in other communities and could do it here. Um and then what we could do is also expand that to Town Hall Plaza, because these are just Bluetooth speakers. So we can play music during the day um or nights where there's no live music, so it's really kind of year two of this overall capital improvement for lighting and sound.
Yeah, that'd be kind of nostalgic, because I remember years ago, when when even I moved to town, it was always like holiday music. I don't know if you guys remember. But uh maybe the nineties, there was always holiday music.
And obviously, technology is a lot better than it was then, and you know, these things can be controlled remotely and um and also Amanda's not gonna take credit, but if anybody saw the photos of Diwali at the at Bauer Center, that was the first night that we did the lights, and they were, it looked like a movie scene. It was absolutely gorgeous. And there was a couple hundred people at the Bauer Center. It was the first time we ever did lighting like that. It really made that whole space pop. I think it was great for the the Indian uh community here in Milburn.
Um and that's a big shout out to John from DPW, because he he made it happen. Um and I was gonna say, we we had made the effort to get that lighting up before then, because most of the holidays are within the November, December. So I'm glad that that worked out um for them. There's something else I was gonna say. I can't remember. All right.
Okay, Executive Director Report.
All right, I have a few more things, but I'm actually going to invite our guest presenter tonight, Vishal Ganti, um who is on Zoom.
Okay.
Um Vishal was actually our summer economic development intern. Uh Jackie found him, so she gets credit. Uh he's a wonderful young man. He's a sophomore at Colby College in Maine. He helped me with a ton of different things, including um engaging uh with off-the-grid businesses on social media and and website enrollment, things like that. Um but one of the things I asked him to do was actually go through um the Main Street America twenty twenty-three. Eight twenty-three? Can't remember. Uh but Main Street America nonetheless uh put out a survey um earlier this year and uh wanted to look at what business needs are across the country. And so now that we are a Main Street, New Jersey, community, we're also part of Main Street America. Um and so Vishal put together a very short presentation, um but I think is is gonna be particularly interesting and exciting is most of the 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 demands that uh businesses across the nation are asking for, we're already doing here in Milburn. Um so Vishal, I hope you can hear us.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, a la- a little louder if you could, Vishal.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
Okay, Vishal, speak up.
Okay.
Take it away.
Is it better now?
Now, a little louder.
Okay, I I changed the setting. Okay. Well, uh hello, everyone. Um as Steve mentioned, my name is Vishal. I this summer I interned with Explorer, and I uh did a bunch of things. I mainly focused on helping off-the-grid businesses set up e-commerce platforms or social media pages, and uh I also helped with a lot of the day-to-day tasks of Explorer, and I had a I had a great time, and I also was able to explore more about the uh Main Street America Spring twenty twenty-four survey, so.
Next slide.
Next slide. Um so just some general information, if you're not super familiar with Main Street America. It's a national organization that uh oversees and assists over sixteen hundred designated Main Streets and downtowns throughout the United States. And uh right after this report, Milburn was actually named a twenty-four Main Street, New Jersey awardee, and we're now a member of Main Street America. Um now, they put out several data uh data several times per year about the national mood of small business owners, their challenges, and their progress. And there's an estimated one hundred seventy-five thousand businesses within the Main Street network, uh round a third of which are small-scale businesses. So in the survey that they did uh this past spring, there were nine hundred ninety-six business owners in forty-six states, forty percent of which had one full-time employee, seventy-five percent had fewer than five, and sixty-two percent had were mainly retail and food businesses, and fourteen percent were personal and professional services. So uh the survey also shows that the pandemic did not slow down business growth as around thirty percent of respondents represented businesses that have launched since twenty twenty, and that's similar to we what we see at the local level since the formation of the Sid in August of twenty twenty, there has been one hundred twenty-three new businesses, uh which now represents about a quarter of the district as a whole. So there were three main questions that were asked in the survey, one of which was um which of the following types of support are you interested in seeing for the Main Street network? And obviously, in the first four, where an overwhelming majority said grant opportunities and appearing on a national directory of Main Street businesses, also learning more about better business practices and promoting businesses online. So Explorer Milburn Short Hills has actually been able to help with all four of these points uh in the past year. Uh especially with grant opportunities, we've had two of note. One was the Explorer Refresh Program, where we were able to help businesses uh with a storefront improvement program, also a couple of years ago with our Hurricane Ida Relief Program. And we've also been sitting with promoting businesses online and having best practices in businesses. I've personally gone to many businesses and helped them set up their own social media pages. So the other two questions were if you wanted, uh if you had access to affordable capital, how much would you need? Twenty-seven percent indicated an amount less than ten thousand, fifty-nine percent indicated an amount less than twenty-five thousand. And for aspects of businesses that where you would invest additional capital into, it was almost fifty-fifty, not quite, where uh fifty-six percent said indicated inventory, equipment, machinery, and raw materials, and forty-six percent indicated physical improvements to the business space. So we can see that the main three goals are national concerns from this Main Street America uh survey was digital modernization, collaboration and support from economic development organizations, and grant programs and access to capital. So with digital modernization, we've helped around twelve businesses and counting with uh enrolling in the NJEDA e-commerce program, working with multiple businesses on social media account creation. Uh we've had hosted multiple education sessions on search engine optimization, social media platforms. As I mentioned before, we've met with several of these businesses to set them up in person. And also, we obviously, Milburn has established a support Milburn Short Hills to help uh support these businesses and give them everything they needed. So we've had a reliable budget budget, diverse service portfolio, and we've had a lot of businesses grow- business growth, that our vacancy rates have gone down since the formation of the Sid as well. So with grant programs and access to capital, I mentioned these two grants before. We've also had several, we're also working with uh NGEDA and Union County EDC to provide the grant and programmatic opportunities to businesses. We've also done several other uh grants and programs such as uh improving the district as a whole with our art art alley and art programs, uh to name a few. So that's mainly what the uh survey showed, and Explorer Milburn Short Hills is on par with what the national concerns of businesses are.
Thank you, Vishal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vishal. That was uh quite comprehensive and and
Yeah, very good, very good.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So I got a question. So we've been providing a lot of what the main interests are based on the survey. Does Main Street also provide support and have you know, in each of those big categories that we now have access to as well? Digital, you know, all those categories.
Yeah, so I get um nearly daily uh email blasts with different webinars and and things that have been recorded. Um we're actually gonna be sharing a bunch of them over the holiday season in our social media. Um they they have a whole package just on how your small business can improve uh your customer base during the holidays. So those will be coming out over the next couple of days. Um Amanda and I will be going to the Main Street Conference next year in April, which is in Philadelphia. Um and we'll spend three days, you know, learning about a lot of these tactics and hearing from other leaders in in uh forty-six of the fifty states. So um there's a lot of information that we now have access to. And it's it's just gonna help me and Amanda, you know, learn more about what our colleagues are doing in other places, because obviously other states have not only different concerns and issues, but different opportunities, different laws. And so, you know, New Jersey, um anytime that we can learn from our our colleagues in other areas, I think it just makes us more knowledgeable.
Do we do we have a link from our website to the Main Street so like businesses can go and then look around? That does Main Street maintain a link that would be useful to our small businesses?
Yeah, we we uh we could definitely link it, and then um just thinking. Yeah, that's probably the easiest way. Then also in our Business Resources tab um on our website, that's where we put all of our recordings and webinars. We're also putting up some of the presentations that we have access to now.
And then one more question. Next to our logo or a tagline, should we now say Explore Milburn Short Hills, a Main Street, New Jersey?
No.
Or something?
I'm very careful.
Yeah, well, in reality, yes.
How they, when are they doing the announcements, Steve?
Uh the announcement is imminent. I don't know, but
Yeah, well, once it's public, obviously, but but then it could become a tagline, of course, with their IP permissions and things, but.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, you know, a lot of communities in New Jersey have replaced their banners to now have the logo. Um so we could do that on all of our banners throughout our districts.
Yeah, to kind of weak to kind of, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, on- once we're onboard, so there's a whole onboarding process that that Amanda and I would love to go through. Um but yeah, that's definitely one of the goals.
And the seminar you're attending on December fifth, that is uh
No, that is Downtown New Jersey's annual conference.
Downtown New Jersey, okay.
Which is uh not the Main Street program. It's a statewide program. Um a lot of the Main Street communities are part of that organization, but it's a different organization.
Are there any, are there any direct support uh programs from 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 Main Street, you know, for merchants or?
I think we'll find out what they're offering in twenty twenty-five when we get onboard.
That would be to somehow push, you know, push that information directly to um
Oh, even have some training and seminars.
Yeah.
Yeah, directly about Main Street.
Cause that could be part of connected to our support.
Correct.
And that might be a great opportunity for our people.
Yeah, I'm hoping that our onboarding occurs with the state um before the end of the year. I don't even know who the other winners are. Um so and it could be one, two, three, I don't know. Um so they've kept everything very close to the vest, but once we onboard, we'll have a lot more information.
Perfect.
Okay, I have a couple of quick things. Two hundred fifty, uh new new businesses, I'm sorry, I owe you that one. Um where are my notes? Um new business, closed business. Um so no news from last month, no new businesses, no closed businesses. Um but I do have uh some updates. I mentioned Zoma Salon at the last meeting will become pediatric facility. Trinity Rehab is becoming a new rehab facility. I spoke to the folks from Peeled Juice Bar, which is the old Elephant Plate, which is next to Design Hub here in the corner of Milburn and Maine. Um they're just waiting on a health inspection, uh but they are very close to opening. Uh Sugaring NYC, which is behind us here, is the old President's Club. Um they received their C O. They're waiting on some licenses from the state, uh and they are currently hiring, so they're gonna be sending me their job information. Um Simple Fair, which is the uh Indian dessert coffee bar that's gonna be opening at the former Charlie Brown's. They're shooting for an early to mid-December opening date. Soothing Zen Day Spa is now Evive Spa. That's at Thirty-Eight Main next to the Standard. And then speaking of staffing, you actually have a lot of response. We posted, you know, every week I send our weekly email blast with open jobs. I took that, put it on Facebook this week. And so, you know, please share that if you see it, if you know anyone that's looking for work, especially during the holidays. They have a ton of open jobs, so they can go to that Facebook post, always email me directly, but we've got a lot of businesses that are looking for people.
Do you have a ET, a date for Whisk and Willow?
I do not.
With Willow and Whisk? No.
It looks like it's going to be really nice. You could really see it.
It's a beautiful space, yeah.
Which one is that?
The old Charlie Brown.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna, isn't that a breakfast lunch kind of place? But but you said it, what was the Indian dessert?
Where is that?
The Simple Fair. So if you kind of look at the building, so if you're standing at the clock tower, looking across the street,
Yeah. Yeah.
Willow and Whisk is to the left, sort of.
Well, it's directly on the corner.
Yeah, it's sort of on the corner to the left.
Willow and Whisk directly on the corner.
And then the Simple Fair is to the right down as it's.
Oh, I didn't realize it was split up.
It's that long piece.
Oh, I didn't know.
The long piece.
The long piece. And then we're actually, the town has been improving the space in the courtyard there. So there will be outdoor dining at the, the Simple Fair. So you can go out, have your coffee and your, your dessert and such.
Do we have an ETA on the breakfast lunch place?
I don't.
Um, alright, it's what I used.
No.
It's statewide, I mean.
At least I didn't get two different answers.
Yeah.
Can I just say, I, yeah, especially with these new places, I mean, we really have such a great restaurant scene. Like maybe we could consider in the future, some type of like Taste of Milburn kind of event, just because I, we really have so many different cuisines and.
I, I think. I think restaurant, we could definitely evolve to something like that. I think we've established a critical mass now.
Right, we have a restaurant, true.
But restaurant, we can always be more interactive.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And so I think it, you know, kind of a Taste of Milburn.
Seems like London, it's out there, so many places so close, the whole, you know, like
Yeah.
To a quick.
Especially with multicultural, you know, we, we do have a, when you look at it, we actually have quite a diverse restaurant community.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. The USA Two-Fiftieth Anniversary Committee. So, as you all know, we've talked about the two hundred fiftieth anniversary of signing the Declaration of Independence is in twenty twenty-six. The township has passed a resolution to establish a committee that's going to work on actually planning the events related to the, I think it's a bissequentennial, I think is the word. But the, the resolution actually has a space for an Explore Milburn board member. So Amanda is currently in that position and, you know, obviously with her work. But if there's anybody on our board that is interested in participating, any history buffs, we can certainly replace Amanda with you. And she would be happy. But just, it's not something that's urgent, but certainly if you're interested in participating in that, you know, we're very thankful to the, the township committee for assigning us a seat. And then it's not on the, what was it?
Quick question, just like what is, is that, are they having weekly meetings already, or what, I mean, what?
No, no, no. Nothing's happening yet.
It's, yeah. It's good talk, you could discuss that. Yeah, I was just curious.
Nothing's happening yet.
I'm sure it's going to ramp up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, simultaneously, we're going to be working on the World Cup, which is happening that summer as well, with final year in New Jersey. Very. So there's a, there's a whole host of things going on there.
That's twenty twenty-six.
They're both in twenty twenty-six.
Regardless of whether I'm on a committee or not, I did work for the Historical Society of Pennsylvania for several years in Philadelphia. So I will definitely be reaching out to them to see, you know, what resources or things we may be able to use from them because they're the second largest archive next to the Library of Congress. And that covers this area of the country, so.
So Amanda just told you, you can't take your spot. The Advisory Committee. So we, we actually had a meeting last night. It's not on the agenda, but I thought we had a great meeting. I want to just cover it. So we did something new for the first time. We actually had a business owner come in who was looking for really a focus group. And so New Mooney Baby, which is here in downtown Milburn, the owner is thinking about rebranding and potentially changing her inventory. And so she came in, we talked about it, we have a group of residents, business owners. And it was a great conversation, we spoke for probably forty-five minutes about how she could approach this change and, and support she might need. I thought it was a really unique benefit that the Cid offers that I've never heard of in another community is let's do a focus group and a visioning session and how we can help your business. We also talked about how we can get the outer district businesses and really non-retail businesses involved in these holiday events. And so the discussion was, I thought was really interesting. We talked about how do we co-mingle them? So like, if Sneaker Factory, which is a retail-based business in the downtown, maybe a physical therapist could go in there during an event, right? Because what do runners need? Physical therapy. New Mooney Baby, maybe they can house sweet-tooth pediatric dentistry, right? If you've got a little kid, you buy baby clothes, maybe you have a baby dentist. The one that I thought was great, clothing store, have a dry cleaner. Nobody goes into a dry cleaner to look for anything, but you buy the clothes, you need to get them cleaned. So I thought it was a really collaborative approach. I thought that was really cool, and we're going to continue to, to flesh that out. But then we also discussed, which is our final item of the evening, which is the, the formation of a Business Assistance Subcommittee. So some of you may have this in your packets, but if you wouldn't mind passing that down. So we've been toying with this idea, you know, for quite a while, and actually came out of the state in the Cid discussion, which is there are certain things that need to be addressed by the, the Cid or at least entertained. And so I spoke to Alex McDonald, and he said, well, I think the best thing to do is for you guys to set up a subcommittee to address these kinds of quirky things that happen. And so the idea would be it's a, it's a sounding board where people can come in and discuss their issues. As I've mentioned sometimes before, we have a Development Review Committee in this town, the DRC. I serve on that committee, but you can only appear in front of that committee if you filed plans either in front of, or file an application, I should say, in front of the zoning board or the planning board. So if you don't need to do that, there really is no mechanism to have those discussions. So this would be that stopgap to say, you know, I, I gave some examples here on the examples of twenty twenty-five, but like, we had an interesting question with, with a business. They wanted to put in a new sign. They have a very, very, very long wall. The way that the ordinance is written on signage is that they basically max out at a sign that's two feet high and six feet wide. But when you compare it to the size of their wall, it's actually a really tiny sign. And so, you know, they, that situation was never accounted for when the rule was written, right? We also don't have a rule that allows for a vertical sign. It can only be horizontal the way it's written. So if you want to put a vertical sign on your building, you really can't. So these are these kind of quirky things that just emerge over time that can be mitigated fairly easily. And so, but you're not going in front of a land use board to file an application. All you really want to know is can we change the rule? And so this committee would be working on those types of things. And then having a township committee liaison, we would ask them to bring them to the township committee and see what might come. And so I spoke to Jackie, and we were toying around with the membership might look like, and nothing's going to formalize tonight. I certainly want you guys to chew on this a little bit. But we were thinking this is a committee that can meet every two months. It would be myself, one board member, the township committee liaison, and then four members of the advisory committee. We would appoint them just like we appoint our advisory board in, in January. This keeps it kind of within the family. You already have to be an existing volunteer. But wanted to give feedback, thoughts, this is all very nascent, but I think there's definitely a need. We just need to create a structure, and this would be solely within our jurisdiction. It's a subcommittee of our own board. This doesn't have to be approved by anybody besides us.
Can I, this, thanks for sharing this and for the thinking. I'm sorry if I missed this, if you said it in terms of who could consult with this committee? Would it be only businesses in the Cid or it would be?
You'd have to be in the Cid.
So you have to be in the Cid. It's kind of like a benefit, an extra service.
Sure.
An advocacy for businesses in the Cid.
Right.
Already in the Cid.
Would most of these things need new zoning changes? Like, we know that you, you've pointed out the need for new zoning and for a variety of reasons. Or is a lot of this just the funnel to kind of wrap around all these zoning requirements?
Well, I don't know if I want to, I don't know if I want to call it zoning. I mean, if you use performance standards, you know, that's something that, you know, the answer is.
Like signage would be why.
I mean, signage technically falls on your zoning.
Right, that's right.
But we're not talking about like taking commercial districts and making them industrial, right? Like, we're talking about minor, minor, minor tweaks. And that, that's really the idea here is and everything, there's, there's always some exception to the rule, right? You write a zoning code, but it can't possibly predict for everything that can happen. Let's solve those minor problems because we want to be a business-friendly community. And I, I, I think I might have said this at our advisory committee, I've been in this business for fifteen years. You hear people talk about what's the thing that kills small businesses, it's regulations.
Right.
I've never, I've never had a single person in fifteen years come to me and go, man, you know, the federal government's really killing my small business. It's local regulations, right? It's permits, it's these things. If we can alleviate those things locally, I think we're going to help our businesses. So yeah, I think Stephen, to your point, it's really these minute kind of things that fall through the cracks.
Yeah. And, and this structure would facilitate that? Because isn't that happening already?
Advocate, advocate for change.
Well, it's not really happening, right? So there's, every now and then, you know, I'll get a call, I'll go to Alex, we can make a change, but there's no real system to say.
There's no mechanism, there is no mechanism to expedite the processes that need to be addressed in an expeditious manner.
So, so if a business, if a big, you know, if, if an explorer business came and had a signage of like a fluky problem.
Yeah.
They'd go before, you know, this committee.
This committee.
And get, and we, we'd listen to the board, the board with that, that committee would listen to the problem.
And then we report back to the board.
And then report back and potentially recommend a change in the work in some sort.
And that's, that's really where it ends, right? We don't have any other authority.
We don't have the authority, but we just make a recommendation, you know, that there's a problem.
So I mean, really what this is, is the DRC, the Development Review Committee, works really, really well. Because when you file an application, you get to go in front of the DRC and you get feedback on your application. What's missing is, well, what if I'm not filing an application? Who do I go to? There's really, like Jackie said, there's really no formal body to say, yeah, you're right, this rule doesn't make sense, let's fix it. And I'm not saying that there's a dozen of these things, there may be one or two a year, but don't we want to be the resource that helps advocate for businesses? I think that's our role.
You're saying it fills a gap.
It fills a gap. Yeah.
Sounds smart.
And, and it also in, in certain applications could help, help new businesses expedite the process and also save them tremendous amount of money through, through a expedited process.
Correct.
So that, you know, we all know of certain horror stories for certain businesses that were really bogged down in the, in the process. And this would allow them to, to really understand it and, and help navigate it so that they can best utilize their time and resources.
So my ask to you guys is spend the next thirty days thinking about this. Certainly, we're interested in the structure and what you think might work. But I think it's a terrific addition to our suite of services.
How, how many people are serving on the advisory committee right now?
So we're, we're limited to fifteen by bylaws.
Right. By ordinance, yeah.
Um, we probably have eighteen or nineteen names. We have people that don't come.
Right.
And so they get invited, they don't show up. We'll cull the list at the end of the year.
Right.
I would say probably starting January, we'll have eight to ten active members.
Okay.
Yeah. Which, and I think based on last night, it's, it's a great crowd, ten people sitting around a table. That's just enough to really dive into issues.
Right.
And make sure they get an invitation to the township party.
Yes, they all did.
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody on the board have any, any questions with respect to this? I think Steve has really done a good job in terms of.
Yeah, I, I just want to thank Steve for putting me on another committee. Thank you.
It'll be, it'll be a board that meets as needed then.
Okay, very good.
We didn't think you had enough, Ben, so. Okay, any other questions or comments about the Business Assistance Subcommittee?
I just, one, just my knee-durker reaction is we should maybe think about a better name for it, the better describes. Because business assistance could be financial, grant-seeking, like it's, it's pretty broad. And I think it, it maybe should be something like, I don't know, ombudsman, something that better.
Ombudsmen are much easier work.
I, I, I just mangled it myself.
When lawyers come up with names, you get things like ombudsman.
You, you could tell, you could tell he's a lawyer, you could tell he's a lawyer.
Right?
Throw some Latin in there, you'll be good. Um, I just throw it out.
Well, now you have a wonderful assignment.
Well, maybe I, I already marked it like brainstorm.
Okay.
Or, or business advocacy.
Yeah.
Business advocacy.
Yeah, Mil, Milburn Short Hills Business Advocacy Group.
We'll have to put it to a vote.
Okay. But that's my back-of-the-envelope recommendation, business advocacy.
Easier to say.
Yeah. And I would just say committee. It's not really a subcommittee. It's business advocacy.
Our bylaws reference.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, okay, subcommittee. Okay, anything else? Otherwise, we're going to go to public comment. Okay, public comment. The public is invited to provide comments and ask questions at this point in the meeting. Those utilizing Zoom or phone will have an opportunity to speak. Clearly state your name, speak into the microphone, and limit your comments to three minutes. Prepared statements may be sent to Tracy, T R A C Y, at exploremilburnshorthills.org. I want to remind everyone that this is a business meeting and professional decorum must be maintained. If a speaker engages in disorderly contact that disrupts the meeting, they will be, they will be, their public comment will cease. Any questions must be directed to me, the chair, at the conclusion of public comment. Members of our board or Mr. Grillo or our, our legal representation may respond. Staff and the attorney will not answer questions without a request from board members. Okay, let's proceed. Let's start with if there's anybody on Zoom, please.
Hey, everybody. I'll make it fast. Christine Best, fifteen Fairfield Terrace. Madam Chair, I have a couple of quick questions and a great meeting. I wanted to ask about the October seventeenth agenda packet in terms of Mr. Grillo advocating for the agenda of having a hundred and twenty-five-foot buffer not, not being prohibited from food establishments, you know, within the Glenwood neighborhood. And from what I understand, I thought that he had spoken with Morielli and Cosgrove and specifics in support of having a hundred and twenty-five-foot buffer. So I would like clarification on that, maybe at the end of the meeting, if that's possible. And then I also wanted to ask you, Ben had brought up a really good point about KPIs, because he's a really strong business person. And I wanted to ask a few questions about KPIs. So, and maybe Mr. Grillo can answer this for me. I wanted to ask how you evaluate your ROI on your events mathematically? You know, like, for example, you have a Winter Village coming up, and I was wondering, like, TYLY, do you have your numbers from twenty twenty-three last year versus the year before in twenty twenty-two? And what are your projected results in terms of accumulated aggregate for merchants in terms of top-line sales and gross margin? In terms of, you know, what the actual investment is in the event? And one of the other things that I thought was important, because Ben had brought up the issue of KPIs, was I wanted to understand with the Winter Villages, I guess, I'm sorry, my, my husband interrupted me, I apologize. With the Winter Villages, I wanted to understand how you, their spend on it, and obviously it benefits the main part of downtown, but the other four districts. Have you analyzed their return on investment versus the other four districts? Because I think that's a really important number to articulate to the group. And then I also wanted to understand, do you guys do a cohort, my dog's going to go crazy, so I apologize. Do you do a cohort analysis of our customer base, household income, gender, age, zip code and interests? Because I wanted to understand what the clear description is of the actual Milburn customer, the total demographics breakdown, and then also what the zip code percent to total spend is in our town. So my dog's going to go crazy, so I thought I would just ask, add those questions. And I also wanted to ask, can you guys consider hiring an art director to lead Explore Milburn, where they would report directly into Jackie? So we have like more of a Neiman Marcus high-end experience that's aligned with our stately town. And that's it. So thank you. My dog's barking, so I'm just going to sign off, but I'll listen for any answers to those questions, and I hope you all have a nice evening. Thank you.
I just have a question. Ms. Best, did you hear? Okay, I think she's clicked off. Okay.
Did you hear me? Okay, I'm so sorry. I thought we talked and.
Okay. Were, were you present for the beginning of the meeting when Mr. Grillo made a statement regarding? Were, were you present for the beginning of the meeting when Mr. Grillo made a statement regarding the October seventeenth?
I was not fully present, so maybe you can, so my apologies. Um, and I, I, I popped in around six thirty, so maybe.
Okay. Okay, so you, you could, she could watch it on YouTube and, and, uh.
Okay, great.
Yeah. All right? And I, the idea of an art director, me personally thinks, wow, that would be great, but how are you gonna fund that art, art director? I mean, that's.
We can take a little sliver from, uh, from.
From where?
Just saying, I'm saying, so, just a thought.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, uh, thank you, Ms., Ms. Best.
No, it's just some thoughts. Thank you so much for your time and I'll listen to the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Um. Yep, why don't we go to the, uh, to the Zoom option? Okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't see who it is.
Good evening, Perry Urso, Short Hills. I was present during the November twelfth, twenty twenty-four TC meeting. However, after watching, I. It was during the introduction of the SID twenty twenty-five, um, budget. Mind you, the citizens, property owners, merchants, and residents were not given the opportunity to comment prior to the TC taking official action. The conversation between the Executive Director, Committee Woman, Prupus, and Deputy Mayor Sakamanti. It is outrageous that either the sitting mayor and our township committee liaison for the SID board did not stop this type of hostile engagement. In my opinion, the executive director should have been directed accordingly and should have been stopped from engaging in this type of disrespectful, unprofessional conduct. And these actions should not be tolerated towards any public official. Additionally, I am shocked by the executive director to continued actions. Out of nowhere, he attacks me and I wasn't even there. I have a few questions. Has this body provided the TC with the executive director's annual review of performance by the Board of Trustees of the SID? If so, when and was it included with the, uh, twenty twenty-five budget presentation? Have the current professional contracts been also provided to the township committee for their review prior to final twenty twenty-five budget hearing? What platforms are used to solicit professionals, positions, and administration hires? As stated by the past DMDA president in twenty, November twenty-one, two thousand and eighteen, does the sitting chair still assist with the hiring process? However, executive director just stated that the chair assisted with the intern. How was this process and outreach acquired? Be mindful that positions are filled to support the business community and not yourselves. Is the ex officio member of the Board of Trustees required to live, vote within Melbourne, or have a business within the five dis- business districts? Concerned with the sitting chair and her position on the Melbourne Short Hills Democratic Party Chair as of June, the public. Uh, previously had questioned the mayor's conflict and she graciously resigned from that longstanding position which our now sitting chair has filled. Should the sitting chair resign for her position as this poses at the same kind of conflict? And why would the Democratic Committee ask during interviews with candidates running on the Democratic ticket if they support the SID? Why is this question relevant and would it bring you once again back to the November twenty-one, two thousand and eighteen TC meeting? Where the DMDA president stated that this entity is used as a political platform is questionable. And I also like.
I'll ask you to wrap up, Ms. Best.
I also like the executive director, I agree with his words, don't wanna waste taxpayers' money. Not only for his explanation, because the lack of traffic that he stated on the businesses on Upper Melbourne Avenue, refer to the April two thousand and twenty-four meeting. And this is for one of the many reasons why I do not support taxation without representation.
Ms. Erso, I'd just like to respond to your comment regarding my chairmanship on the, uh. Demo, as I said, is the Democratic Chair of Melbourne. I just wanna wonder if in fact, the Republican Chair that was just nominated. To a, uh, a new committee, whether or not they will be stepping down. This does not represent any conflict of interest. I am an engaged resident that cares deeply about the residents and the businesses of Melbourne. And I am, uh, deeply offended by your reference. Mr. Grillo, would you like to answer to any of, uh, Ms. Erso's comments?
Well, there way to the end.
Sure.
May I?
Yes, Mr. Feld, you may.
Uh, Jeffrey Feld, long time resident. I basically have four points. Um, earlier, there was a description of the budget presentation, which was a forty-minute presentation about no problems. I, I refer everyone to watch the video. There was heated discussions between two council, um, TC members and the executive director. Also, citizens and residents did not have an opportunity to read, but at that time, the presentation that was put on. By three members of, and the executive director. Um, I just wanna give a little more updates on their properties. The case was transferred, cause I had filed a motion, since the last meeting, I had to turn, file a motion, it's been transferred to a new judge. She has been received all the submissions. I think I've copied you all with all the exhibits, including all the police reports that were filed against dissenters. Of various, uh, board members and executive directors. Um, this judge has not decided yet whether she'll just rule on oral argument, or we're gonna have a trial, where there will be actual testimony. In the interim, I filed a twenty-eight day, uh, frivolous motion, uh, mandatory sections, demand and notice letters upon, uh, defendant. The time has not run yet and we're gonna see whether the town will amend or modify or withdraw its trial submissions to reflect certain things. One thing they need to reflect is the Main Street, New Jersey designation. At the last meeting, you announced, you brought up, you know, the sign, but you didn't tell the public. That the state demanded that you reduce the boundaries of your application, you just did a downtown area. So when you talk about putting an emblem on, you know, on, um, the, the, this is the five district Sid, that's a false statement. Cause only one district is part of the Main Street program. In addition, the state told you that you had to submit a readjusted budget to explain of this, your Sid budget. How much money goes to the downtown? That was not disclosed to the public on Tuesday night. I just bring that out to you. Um, I talked about the Main Street, talked about budget, talked about their properties, about ex officio. That's the question I think we need to have answered. When you're an ex officio, is it sort of assumed that you are still a resident of the town? Or you own a business locating the city? If you don't, um, if you don't meet those requirements, how do you serve as an ex officio member? Thank you.
Anybody else would like to make a statement?
Yeah, just a quick one. Uh, Richie Cyber, town resident. So, uh, my whole life, I've been a businessman, entrepreneur. I just talk about the, uh, Town Hall Plaza. Uh, concessions. We used to have a great movie theater in town. And remember when you walked in, the most money you spent was buying popcorn, candy, soda, pretzels, and nachos. Anything else?
Hot dogs.
Hot dogs. That's the stand that you need as a Town Hall Plaza. And that money should come in to go into the Sid money. That's a return on investment. I'll see you.
There's some, uh, empty space in downtown. Maybe you wanna consider.
Just one for. You have to have an audience for it.
Hi, Vicki Powell, uh, business owner. Um, I just wanna commend you. I think it's wonderful that you switched banks to M and T. I'm a member, uh, they're, they're my banker and I switched, uh, thirty-five years I was with another local bank in town and I switched to them. Um, they do a great job and Erica also does the, their bank and I go in there, you know, for girls' night out, we need this, we need this, can you help this? They're always willing to help. So I think it's great. They're a great community partner, so I wanna commend you for that. Um, also, I wanna commend Ben for, um, oh, and Jackie and Stephen, for the budget presentation. Thank you, Ben, for being such a strong star supporter. It's nice to see that we have the, um, that you have the support. Um, and, um, I think Steve, you know, after a while getting beaten down and knocked down and told you're doing this wrong and doing this wrong. Once in a while, you just have to speak up for yourself and be an advocate and I applaud you for doing that. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to make a public comment? Okay, Mr. Grillo, would you like to respond to any of the?
Was there any specific items that the board has that you'd like me to discuss?
I do not.
Okay, um, you addressed Ms. Best.
Go, hey, you guys, I have to step into, uh, can I? Steve, Steve, can I, the, my dinner party's waiting for me. I just wanna thank Christine Perry and, uh, and Ms. Powell for the strong support. Uh, we do the best with what we have. The KPIs are, are very qualitative and quantitatively driven. And I appreciate everyone's support. Uh, off that, I'm gonna have to jump. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ben.
Excellent. Yeah, so, um, the chair directed Ms. Best to watch the beginning of the meeting concerning the hundred and twenty-five foot rule. Um, the ROI on events, um, you know, the, the quantification is difficult outside of attendance. Because we don't charge for the events, we don't ticket the events. We do rely on anecdotal feedback from our businesses. Amanda does a great job. Postmortem every event, uh, speaking to people. Um, we'll always continue to grow that and the more information we have, the better. Um, she did bring up some, some more detailed, uh, KPIs that we can consider. Um, certainly if she has some specific items and she'd like to email them to me, be happy to have those on the list or we can consider them for, for next year. Um, Ms. Erso, um.
I, I just.
I don't have any comments.
I just also wanna say it, it, the, uh, it, with respect to the, um, winter villages, we, they. We're not comparing apples to apples. Last year, we had a different location. We had a, a different, um, different, some different, slightly different programming. Weather is different. So to say, you know, to look at twenty twenty-three and look at twenty twenty-four and compare them. Is not a fair comparison because they each have a unique set of circumstances. And I suspect, uh, the same thing with Halloween. Um, and, and to your credit, you are, um, you are looking at, at the data, you're looking at what you have. And each year, you're trying to im- improve, um, the experience for both merchants, residents, and all stakeholders. So with your, uh, robust, um, uh, sponsorship program. The, the, uh, the deliverables, um, vary and, and, uh, will, are, are, are fluid. So I think it's very difficult, um, you can, you know, certainly take a, a, a quantitative stab. But please know that it's not, it's not as, uh, quote unquote, scientific, perhaps, because, um, the events are evolving. And being tweaked and being, um, zigged and zagged as, as the public. From your comments or from your constituents or from your supporters and from the business community. So I just wanna, um, mention that and, uh, that it, it should be considered, um, with any kind of evaluation.
And, and Ben mentioned subjective KPIs, right? And I was just reading the mission statement of the Sid, which we read every meeting.
Yes.
And you cannot measure, you know, we're to encourage the economic, cultural, and social vitality of the township. That's what these events are doing, right? And that, you can't measure children at a Halloween party. But we know that it is building the sense of community and as the launching ramp for the whole holiday season. So. The, the subjective, and that was the combination that came out at the Township Committee, uh, discussion as well, like.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and I'll, and I'll just say that, that this organization supports, uh, the businesses in, in, in our district. It supports citizens, uh, a lot of community groups. And I've also mentioned, you know, when there was a hurricane and, 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 and a lot of businesses and people were on their backs. It was Steve that was running through the streets trying to help people and you were facilitating grants. And, uh, we're very lucky as a township to, to have Explore at our fingertips.
We don't sell widgets, right? That's the hard part.
No, as a result, just, I mean, personal anecdote.
Yeah. Yeah.
We, through that ordinance, Steve's efforts, I mean, we had volunteers come into our basement and pull out, we were flooded in the basement. There was a group of people that showed up and, and was helping us drag like soap, cardboard boxes.
But it's, but it's really not a return on investment.
No, no, correct. That's, that's.
It's, it's not a monetary.
It's not, it's so like quantifiable.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a money return on investment.
But having our back to help.
It, it's a return on investment for the businesses and our citizens.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, couple of points of clarification, actually, I realized, uh, Ms. Erso brought up, uh, quoting me to not waste taxpayer money on the Metropolitan event. That was an event we had planned for August, September, I forget.
Yeah.
Um, the Metropolitan's far behind in its expectations of occupancy. So, had they been at the level that we expected them to be, we would have hosted the event. We chose to do the right thing fiduciarily, since we are stewards of the fiduciary trust. Um, do not spend the money when the group that we're trying to attract to our businesses is not a capacity. I think that's a no-brainer. I wish he'd stop saying it. Um, Mr. Feld wrote up that he did not have an opportunity to make comments at the Township Committee meeting on the budget. That's because, and he knows this. The budget hearing is in December and he can make his comments. So he was not stopped. That is not the rule. Um, and then the Main Street application. We did originally propose the downtown and Upper Melbourne Avenue. The state told us that because the distance between downtown and Upper Melbourne is significant, that it's not a walkable community. Doesn't, and so they said, just do the downtown. If you want to score the points to win the award, just do the downtown. Now, I listened to the instruction of the experts and we won the award. So I'm gonna rest on those laurels, cause I'm the only one in this room who's ever won a Main Street award. Nonetheless, it still has nothing to do with the validity of the SID. You can have a downtown Main Street program and a SID, it don't have to have the same boundaries. It is a red herring of an argument.
We'll let a judge decide that, Mr. Grillo.
I think I won that argument now.
You didn't win the argument. You've never.
Excuse me, Ms., excuse me, Mr., Mr. Feld, Mr. Feld.
No, come on, come on. No.
We will, we will, we will respect the decorum of a business meeting.
No. Will you do?
Mr. Feld.
Adjourn. You didn't answer the question about this guy yet, the ex officio.
Yeah.
I'm happy, I'm happy.
Mr. Wasserman.
I'm happy to respond to that. I'm happy to respond. I'm not hiding anything. I, I've been a resident of this town. I love this town. I've been a resident over thirty years.
Are you a current resident?
I am a current resident right now. I am. We, we were very lucky and fortunate after our kids graduated from our schools. After, after, uh, after our kids graduated and our, and our large home was empty, we were very lucky to sell our home. And we went and, we immediately went and contracted for another house in town. Um, and we closed on that house, um, you know, uh, we closed on that house October thirty-first. And, uh, we owned the house and, and it was a few months, uh, in between selling our home. And buying our new home, but we officially owned twenty-seven Berkeley Road. And, uh, we're very happy, um, to be here and it was a few months. And, um, I miss, you know, we, we missed, we, we missed a few months, but, but that's the truth. And like a lot of people, you, the kids go through the schools. You have a large home and you wanna downsize so you could stay in town, so you can downsize your, your expenses. And that's exactly what we did and we're very happy to, uh, own twenty-seven Berkeley Road.
As of October thirty-first.
Yes, sir.
Welcome to the Wyoming neighborhood.
Thank you.
I didn't even know you were my neighbor. I'll see you walking around.
Yes, and we, and we can't wait to, uh, see you in Wyoming. But that's the dream.
May have a motion to adjourn. The next meeting will be held Thursday, December nineteenth at six thirty PM.
Motion.
Second.